Okay, you are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February 22nd, Dublin City Council meeting. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Amrose Rooms.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
And Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn to a second of session as there to consider the appointment of a public employee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Andy. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Rooms.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Very good. We will re- we will reconvene on this platform at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
...
Okay, Kyle, it is seven o'clock. I believe we have everybody.
Okay, we are connected and ready to go.
Right, so are we live at present?
Yes.
Very good.
And Kyle, don't forget you just set me up to share this homework.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the February 22nd, 2021 regular Dublin City Council meeting. Given the current pandemic conditions, we are permitted by state legislature to continue to public, to conduct our public meetings virtually and maintain the safety of all council, city staff, and most importantly, our residents. You can access the live stream on the city's website or on YouTube. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to City Council by the Director of Communications and Public Information and the Clerk's Office during the meeting. We want to accommodate public participation to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on public business. We ask that you refrain from making inappropriate comments and we certainly do appreciate your patience in the midst of these times. With that, I would like to ask Homer Rogers to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor, I think you're muted.
Thank you for that. We do not have any special presentations or proclamations this evening, which brings us to the citizen comment portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on this evening's agenda. I will check in with the Clerk's Office. Jenny, have we received any comments through the Clerk's Office?
We have not.
And Sue, have we received any through CPI?
No, we have not.
Appreciate that. Okay, consent agenda, is there a request to move any item from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none. Jenny, have we received any comments on the consent agenda through the Clerk's Office?
No, we have not.
If you and Sue, have we through the web?
We have not.
Very good. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jenny, would you please call?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Okay, it brings us to second reading, public hearing and ordinances. Ordinances 4820, 4920, and 5020 were tabled at December 7th meeting. And in our last meeting, they were removed from the table. So we will hear, we will start with ordinance 4820 amended.
Determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Thank you. Our staff report will be there. Sarah, good evening, Sarah. Welcome. And you have our staff report this evening.
Great. Good evening, members of City Council. There are no changes to the ordinances in front of you this evening since first reading in October, or excuse me, November, other than an amendment to the date line and the signature panels due to this project carrying over into the new year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jenny, have we received any public comment through the Clerk's Office?
No, we have not.
And Sue, have we received it via the web?
We have not.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Very good. Ordinance 49-20.
Leaving special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District.
Thank you. And Sarah is our, has our staff report on this as well?
I'm back. There are no changes to the ordinances, similarly to the first ordinance. The next one you also see, other than an amendment to the date line and the signature panel. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Jenny, have we received any public comment via the Clerk's Office?
No, we have not.
Thank you. And Sue, have we via the web?
We have not.
Appreciate that. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And ordinance 50-20.
Authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Dublin Wellness LLC, and Twain Community Partners, the Third LLC, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the County Treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Dublin Witness LLC, and Twain Community Partners, Third LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects.
Great. Third time's a charm, Ms. O'Malley.
Yes, it is. No changes to this ordinance other than the amendment to the date line in the documents before you.
Thank you. Jenny, have we received any communications via the Clerk's Office?
No, we have not.
And Sue, have we via the web?
We have not.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo? Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
If you ordinance 02-21.
Rezoning of approximately 11.37 acres from R. World District to PUD, Planned Unit Development District for the development of 30 single-family homes with 2.62 acres of open space on a site located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Shire Rings and Cowes Gray Roads under the provisions of zoning code section 153.050.
Thank you. I will make a motion to put on ordinance 02-21 to the March 8th, 2021 council meeting at the request of the applicant. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, John. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor M. Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 03-21.
Amendments to zoning code sections 153.002, 153.158 through 153.160, 153.162 through 153.163, 153.165 through 153.166, 153.170 through 153.178, and appendices F and G to address the Architectural Review Board Development Requirements and Procedures and Historic Dublin Boundary.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Okay, and the staff report this evening, there she is, Nikki Martin, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As the clerk stated, this is a request for review and approval this evening of ordinance 3-21 for code amendments to the Architecture Review District Code. At the first reading of this ordinance, City Council did raise to staff the entertainment and recreation indoor use. Staff has taken another look at that in order to ensure that that use is permitted throughout historic Dublin. Staff, in addition to historic public where it was previously permitted, has added that as a permitted use both within historic core and historic south, along with use specific standards. With that, no other modifications have been made. I'm happy to answer any questions and we are recommending approval tonight.
Great, thank you. Jenny, have we received any comment through the Clerk's Office?
No, we have not.
And Sue, have we via the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion? And Jane?
Yeah, a couple of things, just in going through some of, and they're, and they're minor, but I think some of them are in the, in the ordinance, not in the rezoning. And so maybe this is a question I need to ask. This is the rezoning and in incorporating the rezoning, the language in the code needs to be accepted as well. Am I correct?
Correct. This is a request for the language in the code.
Okay, so there are just a couple, a couple of things I wanted to ask about. In, I think it's location of structures, and I was just getting ready to find that page, Nikki. Location of structures, there, one of them is to, it talks about accessory buildings have to be a minimum of twenty feet behind the front facade of primary structures. I don't know that's always possible within the historic district, and I was just wondering if that could be added or at the discretion of the reviewing body. It would require, I think, either a waiver or minor project review, and I think because of the limitations sometimes on these sites in the historic district, twenty feet behind a structure for accessory dwellings sometimes can be difficult. Because twenty feet, I mean, if it were five feet or ten feet, that's one thing, but twenty feet's quite a bit. So I just wonder if there could be made some discretion of the reviewing body on that one. On, Nikki, I would just like to hear what, you know, if you think, do you run into that very often?
So that is a new provision that's been added to the code with this amendment. It is intended similar to other zoning districts throughout the city to ensure that the accessory structure is subordinate visually and in terms of location to the primary home. That being said, the Architecture Review Board has full discretion on all applications within historic Dublin, and as you stated, could approve an alternate location through the waiver mechanism. So no additional revisions would be necessary to the code.
As long as the waiver was there. Then on page forty seven, on sign colors in the historic district. And maybe this is for later conversation, but I'm just pointing it out. It's still limited to three colors. And because of the fact that we are looking for a little bit more vitality in the historic district, I'm just wondering if that shouldn't be revisited at some point. It doesn't have to be tonight, but I'm calling it out because it really limits what the signage, you know, variety can be. And three colors just doesn't give you much variety, and it tends to get a little homogenous up and down the street. So I would like personally to see that change and allow a little bit more flexibility and unique signage in the historic district. Be curious to see what the other council members think about that.
I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to having more colors, but if, if it got into significantly more or different colors, probably the colors would come into play. I don't think in the historic district you want to have something that is maybe blue and pink and fluorescent yellow and neon orange. So I don't know that the number of colors is as important as it feel being consistent with the district.
Chris, just it more, to me, it's more of a, in general, I would say, like an earth tone palette that's more appropriate for that district. I totally hear what you're saying, Jane. I just feel that there's sort of a place for the fluorescent greens and, you know, other things like that. But the way I view it is, in any case, the Architecture Review Board has final say. But I wouldn't be opposed to adding a little bit more variety.
And they would probably have to come forward with the sign package, correct, if it were as a development of, Nikki?
That's correct. So from a, just a historic perspective, three was recommended because it's the baseline that has been used in historic Dublin and elsewhere in Dublin over the years. However, the master sign plan process within the proposed code allows for any applicant to come before the Architecture Review Board with a sign with an infinite number of colors, and that really is intended to allow for the creativity that we're all seeking in the district, but also to provide that kind of safeguard against some of the potential unknown impacts of what that sign could be.
You know, Nicole is right, because that is a tradition, and architecturally around the world, it's basically three colors, if you want to keep some kind of unanimity of color blends. But I think, as you've said, Nicole, that we also have that option, that if they come up with something unique or very unusual that, you know, would work, we have that option, and so does all the applicants. So I think it's, it's pretty fairly well stated. And I think it's understood by the applicants, too.
Nikki, is the, is the master sign plan then, does that cost, is that another, another layer of cost to say the retail or commercial businesses in the historic district to come back with something a little bit more creative? Would that cost them more? Would that be more expensive?
So it would not. In two thousand and twenty one, the fee schedule was revised to eliminate the cost for all properties in historic Dublin for the master sign plan review.
Then I think we met, we met the mark then. Okay, that's great. A couple of other things. In the, in the demolition, on page seventy six, it says, I've got to get to that page. It talks to replacement that you cannot, you can, you do, you will not be allowed to demolish unless a replacement structure has been okayed by the Architecture Review Board. I would like to add, and a building permit has been granted. Because I can, this has happened before, is that they got the okay from the Architecture Review Board. They never followed through. They didn't build it, but they could have torn it down. So I think that a building permit has to be granted before demolition can take place. So I'd like to see that wordy, wordage added. And then on, last one is on page seventy eight. It's about administrative departures. It doesn't include setback. It talks about, I've got to get to that page. I'm sorry, it's hard to get to these quickly. And it didn't bring it up, but it was on page seventy eight. And it, and it's about administrative departures, and it says that you can have an administrative departure about lot coverage, and there were a variety of ones, but setback was not one of them. And also, that comes into play a little bit, I think. And I would just like to see that added as a piece on what is allowed in an administration departure, because it does come up every now and then. So other than that, you know, I found it to be really a good rewrite. So sorry about being picky, but I don't know, I live and breathe this stuff sometimes. So thank you.
Anyone else have comments? I just have two questions, both relative to sign, Nikki. One of them is the window signs. So we, there's been some consternation over a period of time of how we measure these signs. If it's, so it's limited to twenty percent of the surface area of the window. But is that a square or rectangle that is drawn around the edges of the whatever the text or the image might be, or is it going to be a calculation of the image itself?
So it is the former. It is a square or rectangle snapped around the entire image.
Thank you. And then my last question is relative to sandwich board signs. We've had a lot of conversation about this and wanting to get them to be creative and unique. And I see that it's limited to anything with a wood or metal frame with either a chalkboard or a whiteboard face. And that it, you know, would be finished in subdued colors. Is that, I guess I don't, I'm not terribly confident that that's going to yield what we wanted in the historic district. It will eliminate, you know, the poly-white A-frame signs that we see so much of, but it really doesn't encourage much in terms of creativity. Is there anything we can do in that space that would get us the, you know, kind of what we're looking for?
Yeah, so you, you are correct. We did revise these standards to be more robust and to limit the more unsightly A-frame signs that are manufactured of plastic with changeable letters. I think in terms of making this section more creative, the code is really intended to provide those numeric and material requirements. The companion document, the Historic Dublin Design Guidelines, which will be before you at your March twenty second meeting, those include additional detail and direction on sign design and character, which we, you know, can revisit and ensure those are robust enough, but I believe with the numerous years of review, it will be to meet your request.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have. Okay. Sorry, too many things open for all at once. All right, yeah, hearing nothing further then. Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Emrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance zero four dash twenty one.
Rezoning of sixteen parcels from Bridge Street District Public to Historic Public, five parcels from Bridge Street District Historic Transition Neighborhood to Historic Public, fifty-one parcels from Bridge Street District Historic Core to Historic Core, twenty-four parcels from Bridge Street District Historic South to Historic South, fifty-seven parcels from Bridge Street District Historic Residential to Historic Residential, and six parcels from Bridge Street District Historic Core to Historic Residential.
Great, thank you. And we'll stay with Ms. Martin as our staff report this evening.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Before you this evening is a request for an area rezoning. This request is in conjunction with the previous code amendment to remove the historic district from the Bridge Street District and rezone the properties accordingly from Bridge Street Districts to historic districts. With that, no modifications have been made since your first reading, and we are recommending approval of ordinance four dash twenty one this evening.
Great, thank you. Jenny, have we received any comments through the Clerk's Office relative to this ordinance?
No, we have not.
Thank you. And Sue, have we via the web?
We have not.
Appreciate that. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate all the boards and commissions work in getting this done. Think it's going to be important to rezone these areas out of the Bridge Street District for the future. Just maintaining the historic character of our historic core. So I certainly do appreciate that. With that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Emrose Grooms?
Yes.
Reading public hearing ordinance zero five dash twenty one.
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. And there's Jennifer Rangler with our staff report.
Good evening, council members. The ordinance before you tonight adopts a supplement to the Dublin codified ordinances. This is basically a housekeeping measure, and it includes all local legislation approved by City Council through December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and state legislation that's current through September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Stack recommends approval of ordinance five dash twenty one at the second reading, public hearing on March eighth, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, appreciate that. Jenny, have we received any comments via the Clerk's Office?
We have not.
And Sue, have we received any via the web?
We have not.
Thank you. Council questions, discussion? Hearing none, we will look forward to the second, March the eighth. Introduction, public hearing, resolution, resolution zero seven dash twenty one.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the University Boulevard Phase Two, Shire Rings Road and Avery Road Intersection Improvement Project.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Christina. And our staff report will be Paul Williams Smith, and there he is. Welcome, Paul.
And good evening, members of council. On February fourth, two thousand and twenty one, seven bids were received, open and read for the University Boulevard Phase Two, Shire Rings Road and Avery Road Intersection Improvement Project. Work included in this project consists of construction of point five two miles of University Boulevard and the reconstruction and realignment of point six four miles of Shire Rings Road, and includes four roundabouts, one traffic signal, curb and gutter, medians, asphalt shared use paths, sidewalks, water mains, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, culverts, streetlights, landscaping, and an American Electric Power, AEP, duct and vault system. Phase two of the Cos Gray ditch relocation is also part of this project. The first phase being constructed in the second half of two thousand and twenty and substantially completed last December. The project is located between Itonman Road and Avery Road, providing access to the Ohio State University, OSU, Wexler Medical Center, outpatient care facility currently under construction along the north side of University Boulevard, scheduled to open in two thousand and twenty two, and a part of an economic development agreement between Dublin and OSU. The new AEP, Amlin, or American Electric Power, Amlin Dublin Hundred Thirty Eight KV Transmission Line will be located along the north side of Shire Rings Road and the south side of the University Boulevard as it runs through the area for this project. Dublin staff will work, will work closely with both project contractors to ensure coordination of all works. AEP intends to cons, to begin construction of the transmission line in early two thousand and twenty two and be complete in the spring of two thousand and twenty two. The engineer's estimate for the University Boulevard Phase Two and Shire Rings Road, Navy Road Intersection Improvement Project is seventeen point seven million dollars. The total of the funds budgeted for the roadway and intersection improvements in the two thousand and twenty one, two thousand and twenty five CIP are seventeen million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Pursuant to the Economic Development Agreement, OSU is responsible for thirty-two point five percent of the actual cost of the University Boulevard Phase Two portion of the project. In addition to the University Boulevard contribution, OSU is responsible for contributing one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the AV Road and Shire Rings Road Intersection Improvement. Additionally, the city has been awarded two million, five hundred thousand dollars towards a project from the state of Ohio Development Services Agency, Roadway Development, six twenty nine funds. And lastly, AEP will reimburse the city approximately one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for work associated with constructing an underground duct and vault system that will be used to supply electric power along the University Boulevard corridor. Miller Brothers Construction submitted the lowest investment of thirteen million, ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars. University Boulevard is required to be substantially complete and open to traffic in May of two thousand and twenty two. The intersection of Avery Road and Shire Rings Road is required to be substantially complete by December, two thousand and twenty two. The final completion date for the entire project is January, two thousand and twenty three. AEP intends to be, to begin construction on the transmission line project in early two thousand and twenty two and be complete in spring, two thousand and twenty two. Again, this work will take, occur simultaneously with Dublin's project. The typical communication methods as outlined in the staff report will be used to convey construction information with the residents and motorists throughout the duration of this project. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the Miller Brothers Construction Incorporated bid. They have, they did perform the first phase of Cos Gray ditch relocation last year and did so favorably. However, since this contractor has not performed a roadway construction project for the city of Dublin, staff made inquiries with references provided in their bid. The response received was very positive regarding their work quality and execution. Staff recommends council approval of resolution number oh seven dash twenty-one, accepting as lowest and best a bid of Miller Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of thirteen million, ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars, and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Miller Brothers Construction for the project. I'll be glad to answer any questions that council might have about this resolution.
Great, thank you, Paul. Jenny, have we received any comments through the clerk's office regarding this?
No, we have not.
Thank you. And Sue, have we received any through the web?
We have not.
Council questions, discussion. Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, I just have a question, and it's not about the cost, but this is the first time I've actually really seen the layout of this. And I'm noticing as I enlarge this, that we have a dedicated bike lanes on both sides of University Boulevard?
That is true.
Okay, so, and which is great, as we've talked about this in our visioning process about making sure that we have this connectivity. But I'm a little curious, they stopped at the round, the dedicated bike lane stops at the roundabouts and is expected to merge into auto traffic? Is that, is that, can you kind of help me understand how we make that safe?
Yeah, typically what we do is we actually transition the bike lanes and pick them up off the roadway and put them onto the path system, and then get them through the intersection and then place them back, you know, into the roadway themselves.
So they have to go off the roadway, onto the path, across the pedestrian walkway, and then back onto the roadway?
Correct, but I will confirm that to make sure that's the case, but I believe that's how this was laid out in this project.
Yeah. The only reason I ask that is because with the experience of the roundabout at Riverside and One Sixty-One, it is, there's no way a bicyclist, there's no way a bicyclist could ever be in the roundabout like that. And, and it is, you know, difficult sometimes to be sure that they can do it even safely crossing over. And I think it's really important that we give high consideration to these multimodal transportation lanes that we're designing when it comes to being able to make sure that in the future we accommodate, you know, these other vehicles that we hope to accommodate because we're building roads today for the future of tomorrow. And I certainly don't have any problem with the estimates and all of that sort of thing. But I, but I really think this needs to be well thought out when it comes to how we're accommodating anything other than an automobile around these roundabouts.
Understood.
Curious to understand.
Evaluating that as well.
Yeah, council thinks about that.
Paul, wouldn't that navigation be similar to some of the other roundabouts that we have?
Somewhat similar. We don't have. Yeah, we don't have many bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes in the city. Now, we do have some, you know, charros. So this will be somewhat unique on this roadway itself to have the dedicated bike lanes. Probably our next best example is really Muirfield Drive north of Bran Road that has dedicated bike lanes. And you'll, you recall, we do pick those up and put them on the path system before you get to the Muirfield Bran Roundabout, for instance, or the Muirfield Drive Glick Road Intersection.
So Paul, on the dollars and cents, this was, this was quite a bit less than what was estimated. What would perhaps contribute to that?
We looked at the bids. One, probably the biggest difference is was the excavation and embankment. As it was estimated by the engineers, the cost of that compared to what the contractors did. Probably the advantage that Miller Brothers had was having performed the Cosgrave ditch relocation, had experience out here. So I'm sure that helped them be more competitive with their bid, but that's probably where we saw the biggest difference.
Any other questions? Well, I do, I mean, I agree, Jane, looking at these is important. I appreciate getting the bikes out of the roundabout because that, as we've seen time and time again at Riverside and One Sixty-One, that that particular form of transportation in a roundabout is problematic. So I do appreciate the consideration of taking them off the asphalt in the dark gray portion of these bike lanes and taking them across pedestrian crosswalks and back on that way, albeit maybe not ideal in terms of efficiency of riding your bike. I think it probably is more ideal in terms of safety. So I do appreciate that.
We would agree. Thank you.
I do want to personally thank Director Mahalik with the Ohio Development Services Agency for their contribution of that two and a half million dollars. We certainly do appreciate that, and we appreciate their partnership on this, on this project and helping us bring it to fruition. With that, Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, resolution, resolution zero eight dash twenty-one.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into memorandums of understanding with the Franklin County Board of Elections for use of municipal property in the administration of public elections.
Christina, probably introduce it.
I always want to introduce it. Absolutely. I'll introduce this one. Sorry, I'm having issues with my dog. My dog will not leave my side, and she's a little distracting at the moment.
Welcome to virtual work. Okay, our staff report is from our very own Mr. McDaniel this evening, so welcome.
Evening, members of council. So this is pretty self-explanatory as an intergovernmental agreement between ourselves and the Franklin County Board of Elections. This is specifically as it refers to polling places at the city's development building at fifty-two hundred Emerald Parkway and at the Recreation Center at fifty-six hundred Post Road. These have been polling sites for many years, will continue to do the same excellent support of the Franklin County Board of Health so that all people can access these facilities to vote. And with that, I appreciate your support of this resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you, General. Jenny, have we received any comments via the clerk's office?
We have not.
Okay, and Sue, have we via the web?
No, we have not.
Council questions, discussion. Dana, will we add the new council chambers to this at some point in the future, perhaps?
That'll really be up to the board of elections. They may choose at some point to shift that over. I think we'll take that conversation up with them later, but people are so used to coming there that I don't know that they'll want to, they'll want to change it, to be honest with you, but we'll take that conversation up with them.
Great, appreciate that. Okay. With that, Jenny, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Okay, that will bring us to the other portion of our agenda this evening, and we will go back to General McDaniel with the staff report for the Dublin Link lighting policy and Black History Month.
Um, okay, so as far as the, the lighting memo that we had in your packet, we had staff take a look at a policy relative, and it's an administrative policy relative to how we may light the Dublin Link Bridge. I think Megan's on, I believe, so she can also help to answer questions about this. She did a lot of the research on it. I would, I would add that we significantly modeled this after the Empire State Building. So if anybody's figured it out as far as lighting, they probably have. So we think that that lighting policy picks up a lot of the key events throughout the year relative to lighting. We really did not want to get into lighting the bridge, you know, for every event that may, you know, anyone may have an idea of, or birthdays or whatever. So we really wanted to try to have a, a pretty solid policy here about what that would look like. We, it's our intention to, to stick to that policy unless council has other recommendations they want to consider. So we just want to get that in front of you for your awareness. If you have any input on that, please let us know. Would also add that I just wanted to lift up that this, that February is Black History Month. As you all know, Black History Month is an annual celebration of the achievements by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in U.S. history. Since nineteen seventy-six, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. So the Black History Month twenty twenty-one theme is Black family, representation, identity, and diversity. And the city has recognized Black History Month this year by promoting and previewing the emancipation play running all month long in the Abbey Theater, and it's currently on the front page of the city's website. I would encourage folks to go there and check that out. Additionally, Charlottesville has been playing the Abbey Theater. Its playwright story ran on the front page of the Dispatch Entertainment Section this past week. So we're pretty proud that we got that level of recognition and promotion there. So we encourage you to go take a look at that. Now, the city has promoted Black History Month through social media posts on social media platforms. And we also established a culture corner for Black History Month at the Dublin Community Recreation Center. If you haven't had a chance to swing by and take a look at that, it's at the corner there at the Abbey Theater. Please take the opportunity to at least stop in and, and take a look at that. You can do that safely with social distancing and the like. And our economic development team and communication and public information team worked together to feature Dublin-based businesses that are of black ownership, and we promoted those on LinkedIn and social media as well. So we hope everyone in the community has and or will take pause this month to explore and celebrate Black History Month. We realize we're a little bit limited on our gathering opportunities at this time. It's been a little bit challenging to, to really celebrate perhaps at the level that we, that we should or could, but hope that we have done a good job of promoting Black History Month this year and look for even more opportunities in the future post-pandemic. That's all I have on those two items.
Great, thank you. All right, next we have the log cabin reconstruction location, and our staff report will be from Matt Human. Great.
Good evening, members of council. As noted in your packet this evening, staff has evaluated the preferred site locations for the reconstruction of the two-story log cabin that was discovered in the home on Riverside Drive back in two thousand and eighteen. Based on the general location of that property, two preferred park locations include Thaddeus Kachusko Park, located at the intersection of Riverside Drive and Hart Road, and Ferris Wright Park located on Emerald Parkway east of Riverside Drive. As noted in the staff report, each of these parks offers various elements for consideration such as historical references, open space availability, programming opportunities, and so on. One key element that was not noted is that there is likely a need for public restroom facilities to be nearby if it is going to be programmed or open to the public. And Thaddeus Kachusko Park does not have any restroom facilities on site at this time, which is certainly another consideration. Ferris Wright Park recently did open its new restroom facility a couple of years ago to accommodate the interpretive programming for that park. As, as part of the site evaluation process, staff has consulted with the Dublin Historical Society for their review of the preferred locations, and they prefer the Ferris Wright Park location on the basis of having more programming opportunities and expressed a concern that the cabin may be more, a little bit more static of a feature at Thaddeus Kachusko Park. Staff is here basically to seek council's input, and if there is a desire for either of these preferred locations being proposed, then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Matt. Council discussion?
I would just say I prefer Ferris Wright Park. Lots of room, don't have to take down any trees, restrooms, more parking, lots of reasons. Obviously, it's not as ideal in that, that the cabin was evidently occupied by Thaddeus at one time, but Ferris Wright, most of the, the things line up.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. I think if there were some other things going on, I would definitely prefer Park, but I think it makes the most sense at Ferris Wright, given the amenities and frankly, the size and location of it.
Matt, I'm kind of curious as to, you know, was there any discussion at all about putting it at any other parks such as Kaufman? When you were making your record?
There was a conversation that I had with Tom Holton about that, that concept and that idea. One of the reasons we selected, didn't select that site was that the cabin was actually discovered on the east side of the river. So it was determined that that would be the better location, just given the proximity of that site.
Okay. It's, I'm also curious, I think Ferris Wright is, is the better option of the two, obviously. And the use of the farmhouse and then the use of the cabin, my hope at least, was that, that this recreation would be an educational opportunity, that it could be open for children to see what cabin life was like. Is that the intention of utilizing Ferris Wright as a space for, I know, educational opportunities when it comes to archaeology, but these kind of lifelike experiences of seeing what farm life was like in the farmhouse, looking to see what cabin life is like in a cabin house? Is that kind of the way you're, that park is moving in the direction of education?
Yeah, there's a lot of interpretive work being explored currently for that exact reason. And, you know, a lot of the storyline of Ferris Wright Park is certainly with the Native Americans that, you know, had their, their mounds constructed there for their celebratory purposes and so on. But it also celebrates the various settlers throughout time. And this is another component that could fit into that era, a little bit towards the transition between framed houses to, or log houses to framed houses. So there's certainly an educational component of that. We're looking at providing all kinds of children's camps and things that are educational from a pioneer day type of thing to, you know, field trips from schools and so forth.
That's great. I, I'd just like to make one suggestion. I know we've talked about this when it comes to reconstruction. It would be a wonderful experience if the Tulsa Technical Construction Students could gain any kind of access, hands-on opportunity for when this cabin is reconstructed. I think it would, it would be an invaluable educational opportunity from the time that we've taken it down to the time we get a chance to use it as an educational piece for those students to see what a historic reconstruction and, and construction kinds of technique were used in those days. So if there's any way that we can pull that off when this is reconstructed, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I'd like to do that real time as well, but I'd also like to video the reconstruction process to show we have it in archive.
Great, thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Matt, I'm just sort of curious, you know, as we save these cabins and we move them around to different parks, and I'm just hoping that there's some kind of illustrative thing that shows really why the pioneers chose the original site. Now, you know, it's not going to be on the original site, but there was always a lot of logic foresight in these early pioneers on where they put their cabins. And of course, we move them all over Dublin. But I think it'd be an interesting part of the explanation of this cabin is to show what, where the cabin really came from. And then you could pretty much surmise why, or you could explain why that cabin was in that particular location. And I think.
That's a good point, Councilmember Reiner. We actually have been approached by a group that does that exact type of research. So they're already digging deep into understanding the location, why it was there, what it was used for, that kind of thing. So I'm hopeful that they'll find something of significance.
I mean, neat to know which kind of interesting visitors, Simon Kenton or any of these other early pioneers may have stopped in some of these cabins because their lore is very interesting. And even our local guy, Simon Kenton, if you look at his history, he's, didn't have a great publicist as Daniel Boone or Davy Crockett, but was probably as much of an adventurer, if not more so. So those kind of things would be really interesting to everybody. Thank you.
Agreed.
You know, one, I want to add just something to what John said. You know, that is a really good point, John. These cabins were sited to utilize the only means of transportation to get goods from one place to another. And, you know, it's, it's kind of worth the second thought. Is it, is it possible there's anywhere, any place along the river on the east side that the cabin, or the, I don't know, the Arts Council? Because the sighting of the cabin was really indicative of how cabin life was back then, or pioneer life was. It wasn't out in a field. It was, the front door to this cabin faced the river, and the road was between the cabin and the river. That's, that's how this was originally sighted. river. That's how this was originally sighted, and the farmland was behind it. So it is an interesting thought that John has, and I don't know, not to put a wrench in the works, but there is some, you know, consideration there.
Kathy?
Yeah. Is there any connectivity between these two parks at all pathwise, other than, say, along the road?
No, not along the road. I'm trying to think of the roundabout way to get from one to the other. I think you'd have to go up towards Sider High School and head north from there and then back down Hart Road.
Yeah. You know, I know the Ferris Wright Park seems the logical because of the space. Back to cabin life in the woods, location activating the other park, it just seems a shame to me that it can't be at the other location, frankly. I mean, the logistics of where it is, I get, it just feels so much more natural to me to put it in the other location. And I don't know, I understand the parking, and I just, it's not that far from a distance really as the crow flies, but getting from point A to point B is a pretty difficult thing, say, if you wanted to be able to take advantage of the location in terms of parking and stuff. It feels like the convenient answer to me more than the right answer. So that's how I feel about it, you know?
I agree, Kathy, and I wonder, Matt, if the Historical Society thought that improvements to the other park were out of question. Meaning, if you were to pose the question, in a perfect world, where would you put this cabin, in a perfect world? Would they still choose Ferris Wright? Because I agree, there's more of a connection to the other park. It's just not feasible in its current state.
I agree with that as well.
You know, Kathy can attest, I asked that we look at additional sites when this was originally brought to us in our agenda meeting, because I don't think it's at all appropriate to put this on the Ferris Wright property. I think when we mingle Indian mounds with early American settlers, that they're two completely different studies. And I would rather not put the cabin up than put it up in the wrong spot and have it be there forever. So, you know, we can come up with a master plan for the Thaddeus Kachusko Park, maybe involve restrooms and things of that nature down the road, but to put this up because there's a bathroom nearby is a real injustice to this building. It would have been used by trappers. It would have been used by all those kinds of people that were navigating the river to James Point, and the river would have been on one side and the road would have been on the other. And I don't know that the Thaddeus Park is perfect, but it does have the feel of being in the woods and being along a tributary. There is water nearby in terms of a pond, and there are other elements that would have been consistent with the use of this cabin. So, you know, I, from the get-go, was not really comfortable with this going on Ferris Wright property, because that property has enough heritage to speak on its own accord. It has a whole story to tell. And this cabin has a whole nother story to tell, and those two stories are not terribly related. So if we put it up, I would put it up at Thaddeus Kachusko Park, and I would come up with a master plan for that park that would include the facilities necessary to support it. Or I would look for a place at Soda Park. Not that we need anything else going on at Soda Park. It already has enough going on and enough story there as well. So I'm not necessarily advocating for that. But, you know, we do have other properties that we hope to acquire along the river at some point in time that would be super appropriate for a cabin like this.
So yeah, I guess I would prefer, because I feel the same way. I just feel like Ferris Wright's not the best place, but I think if we're trying to do programming, it makes more sense than Thaddeus Kachusko Park. But I agree from a, you know, interpretive standpoint, it doesn't make sense to put it at Ferris Wright. And maybe what I really need to be saying is I'd rather wait and put it in the right place and find the correct location. And I understand that that brings about other issues in terms of storage and making sure that it's in good enough shape to put it all back together again and whatever. I don't know at all that means, but I'd rather wait and put it in the right spot if we're not finding the right spot today.
I agree with you, Christine. I had the opportunity to be in that building before they deconstructed it. And standing in its original location, understanding why they chose where it was and how it oriented to the river and why the river was their main piece of, main means of transportation, it taught me so much just by standing where it once stood. And I think we have so much riverfront property that we're trying to activate anyway, that we should wait for just the right spot. And if we can make it mimic sort of the kind of lifestyle that it once lived in, I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for us.
I would just add again, I do think it's important to have the Historical Society's input. They're certainly more of an expert than I am with respect to the history of Dublin. And I would also say that, to me, one of the most important aspects would be, I guess, visibility or accessibility. So wherever it ends up, it needs to be in a place that students can tour it, have an education, there can be programming. To me, those are the most important elements. You know, I think about the Ohio Historical Center near the old Crew Stadium. It's in a building, but it's a one-stop shop for learning if you want to learn about Ohio's history. And no, it's not the perfect setting for all of the dioramas and everything, but it's a great place to get an education. So I agree that Ferris Wright isn't necessarily the right place in the context of history, based on what you folks are saying and, you know, where that cabin would have been originally. But if it's often some spot where no one sees it, we're losing a lot of the value.
You know, a good possibility for the location of this cabin is the east side of the Bridge Street Park when it finally gets finished, or at least down in that area. Because again, it puts it back in the context of the major road that faced the house and the river where they got water. And I don't know how much transportation was done on that river at that time. Depends on its depth, but that would put it back into an area where there's going to be a lot of tourism, a lot of people are going to be at Bridge Street, crossing the bridge, looking down at it, and may want to come down and explore it. So that's a very good possibility, I think, for a future home for this cabin, where it'll get the kind of attention that it probably deserves.
Okay, well, I'm going to try to take a survey here because we're supposed to take a vote on this this evening, so.
Mayor, if you don't mind, you know, if you'd like for staff to do a little bit more exploration and a little bit more research and look into the possibility of master planning, at least come up with some concepts internally and see what feasibilities we have. You know, there is a grant award attached to this project, so waiting, I don't know what the timeframe is on that. It's all, I don't know what that actually is at this point, but we would certainly be happy to bring this back forward.
Right. I think that's where I was trying to get to with this and saying that we might like to look at some other locations. So appreciate you doing that, Matt. I know that you put a lot of work into this already, and I don't want to short sight that work, but I do want us to just take enough time, the time that it deserves, to make a thoughtful decision. So appreciate your willingness to do that. Jennifer, do I need to, because it's on our agenda, requesting a motion and a vote, do we need a table, or can we just leave it because it's under other?
I think because it's under other and because it's a staff project, let's just leave it, and they can come back when they get their research done.
Great. Appreciate that. Okay. In that same vein, next up will be the Dublin Arts Council update and Public Art Master Plan from our Public Services Committee recommendations. And with that, David Gion is with us this evening, and Matt Earman are going to, there he is, David. So you and Matt are going to tag team up on this, I understand, and give us the recommendations that arrive now.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick introduction. I'll turn it over to David for his presentation. What we'll offer you this evening is a proposal for the Art in Public Places Master Plan. You'll recall in 2019, the original plan was approved by the Dublin Arts Council Board and in advance to the Public Services Committee of Council for review and recommendation. The plan was scheduled to be brought to City Council with a recommendation for approval in spring of 2020. However, the city's priorities were interrupted due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Dublin Arts Council and city staff have since made revisions to the original document to better align with the context of the emergency situation. This updated version is before you tonight with the conditions taken into consideration. Dr. David Gion is with us this evening to provide City Council with some of his latest arts and council updates and to provide an overview of the master plan for your consideration. And Kyle, if you wouldn't mind allowing David to share his screen so we can pull up the presentation?
Kyle, have you been able to give David the--
Yes.
--share on the screen?
Just seconds, I'll have a fore--
Thank you.
Okay, David, you should see presenter rights on your screen.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Matt, for the introduction. I want to also thank you for your ongoing support. You're truly helping us make an impact by providing unique and engaging arts experiences for the community, for those who live, work, visit, play, and learn in Dublin. I'd like to just give a brief update on the Dublin Arts Council and our current programming. So in addition to funding from individuals, corporations, and foundations, we are continuing to secure state and federal funding to realize our many programs and initiatives. We received a highly competitive federal CARES grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. We received the first Paycheck Protection Program, which was granted to the organization. We have a second draw of the PPP that is now in process. We also secured CARES Act funding through the Ohio Arts Council, and two additional Ohio Arts Council grants are in progress. And for the loss of revenue from our liquor license, Dublin Arts Council received a bar and restaurant assistance fund grant through the state of Ohio. So our Artifacts Created at Home exhibition, which opens March 9th and runs through April 16th, is being assembled and is ready to install. Approximately 150 artworks are received from the community, and nationally-recognized public artist Matthew Moore, who is a Dublin resident, will unveil his latest kinetic sculptures as part of the exhibition. In addition to Matthew Moore, this year's lineup includes nationally and internationally exhibited Dublin residents, Aida Garrity and Leo Hung-Mao. We moved the 38th Annual Sundays at Soda Concert Series to mid-August through the first week in October, working closely with the Franklin County Department of Health Guidelines. We continue to collaborate with Visit Dublin Ohio, the Six Foot Galleries is coming back, Public Art and Public Health Initiative, installed for visitors around St. Patrick's Day. And you should also look for superheroes coming soon as part of the Far From Ordinary Close to Home Restart Campaign. Dublin Arts Council has been invited to submit a bi-monthly arts and culture feature for Dublin Life Magazine through 2021. The current issue includes a three-page feature of the artifacts exhibition. In-person appointments are available at the Dublin Arts Council Gallery, and all gallery exhibitions can be experienced virtually through informative videos and artist interviews. With our mission to engage the community, we're exploring additional curbside concerts and pop-up arts experiences. We've been working with the City of Dublin to standardize public art signage this year. The signage is modeled after those used at the renowned Walker Art Center. This provides us with an opportunity to relaunch the Public Art Cell Phone Tour on a more robust platform, which will include audio transcripts for the hearing impaired. The Public Art Master Plan was prompted by a need to formalize public review of art, the importance of allowing individual voices to be heard, and taking into account national best practices in the public art arena. Developed in collaboration with city staff and led by noted public art consultant Helen Lessick, the plan memorializes much of the way the city and DAC have conducted the Art in Public Places program over the years. It sets a way forward with milestone achievements. It has the potential to align with the city's 2035 framework plan. The Public Art Master Plan is a guiding document for program establishment, development, and growth. The process began in 2017 when Helen Lessick drafted the plan with Dublin Arts Council and city staff. On June 5th, 2019, the Public Services Committee approved the plan. Full review and adoption, as Matt mentioned, by City Council was postponed. In February of 2021, DAC and city staff revised the plan to better align with the changes in context of the emergency situation. This evening, I am presenting an updated master plan for review and adoption. The goals of the plan are to position Dublin as the premier city for public art, emphasize Dublin's cultural identity, provide for strategic growth of community investment, provide a framework for creativity, identify art sites across the visual landscape, enhance public art's role in quality of life, provide for public art in development projects, and finally, to support the public art efforts through education and collection maintenance. So to summarize, streamlining the partnership and process between Dublin Arts Council and the city is part of the master plan. Designating DAC and City of Dublin staff to address public art commission opportunities, to educate and engage the community through public art, also to establish the Public Art Review Committee Park, which is to provide advisory review and recommendations to City Council, and also to help redefine public art to include artist-led, permanent, temporary, community, and participatory artworks using best and 21st century practice. So thank you for your leadership, Council, in developing and maintaining world-class public art collection. With your vision, Dublin will continue to be recognized for its innovation and creativity, and Matt and I will be happy to answer any questions about the plan.
Great. Thank you, David. Council questions, comments? Yeah, Jane?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. It's a very complimentary one and one I think that I think the public needs to hear. David, as I look back over this past year, especially with the pandemic, and when you started this journey through this master plan, I've seen so much interaction with the community that if I were to count the number of people between your Art and Wellness Program, your youth programming that you're having, your camps and your workshops, your river boxes, the at-home initiatives, the concerts, it's in the thousands. It's in the thousands of people in this community that are now interactive with art. And especially in this past year, when the pandemic has created such isolation and loneliness, I don't think you could have planned Art and Wellness at a better time, at a more therapeutic time than you have. And I hope you and the staff feel wonderfully satisfied and proud of the fact that you were able to get that up and running at a time when everybody needed it the most. And so I just want to applaud you, and I so support this master plan, because it has just brought out into the community in ways that I don't think any of us could ever have imagined or needed at a better time. So from my perspective, congratulations, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you so much. And I'll pass that on to the staff. I have an amazing group of people who have just gone above and beyond to reach out to the community in the time of need, in a crisis. So I think the arts have really made a huge difference. And I can't begin to tell you, I know Andy stopped by the gallery a couple weeks ago, and I said, "It's amazing that every day we get this feedback from people saying how wonderful it is to have this programming in our community, and it's thanks to you and your support." So I appreciate you-- So I appreciate you allowing us to be good stewards of the funds. So thank you.
Hey, Doc, I just want to say again, thank you for the hard work on a forward-thinking plan. And I echo Jane's comments. You have entertained our community with interest and hope during a very, very difficult period. So thank you. Yes, no matter where you went, you saw the Dublin arts community, whether it was stones painted, mats on the bridge, I mean, it was just everywhere, or singing people in their trucks. I mean, you really went all the way overboard. And I gotta say, we gotta be really proud of our arts group as the leaders and maybe the most creative people in this part of the country or maybe the United States. So congratulations on everything you did. Thanks, Doc.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, David, for everything. As I read through the plan, I think one of the things that impressed me the most was how thorough the plan is. You know, I don't know that most of us think about what are best practices for public art. You know, art can be something you really enjoy, or it's something maybe that you don't, or you like this piece, but you don't like that piece. But yet, they all have to sort of be governed by how you choose things because you can't always choose something that everybody's gonna like all the time. So I really appreciate the thoughtfulness in putting these together and kind of giving us a little bit of a roadmap for how to think about public art so that as we look at the pieces that we currently have and the direction that we want to go with additional art pieces in the future, we think about things like location, we think about the warranties involved with how long that should be for the art, right? There's a lot of stuff I would never have thought of. So I really appreciate the thoroughness of the plan as well as how involved you and your staff have been in the community. We're really lucky to have you guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, David, I have a question for you. So having been several months through this, how do you think art's gonna be different in Dublin? Say, five years from now, or to your mention earlier, Dublin 2035? Couple takeaways?
Well, looking out to 2035, I think it's a really exciting time for arts and culture and the cultural industries right now. I mean, we're seeing a huge blow, but at the same time, I believe that it's Joanna, who's the head of the Wexner Center, said, "Maybe this is the time for Renaissance in the arts." You know, now that we've come out of the pandemic, maybe this is the new Renaissance. So I'm really hopeful. I'm sort of an optimist. So you catch me at a time when I think that things can only get better and the arts can really triumph over adversity.
So perhaps, David, we needed another word than Renaissance, right? Maybe we could...
Exactly.
What, I don't know what this is, whatever it is, but I'm sure your team will come up with that word, right?
Will come up with something, absolutely.
But it is true, isn't it? We're looking at all sorts of things with new eyes. So thank you for all you've done. We so appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, certainly, David, we appreciate all that you've done here and now. But reading through the report, I appreciate the long-term vision too, and speaking to maintenance and a long-term care of the collection because, you know, it is so wonderful, and it has taken so much blood, sweat, and tears over time. You know, I remember when the first installation went in at Sauter Park and how proud this community was, and certainly that's required significant maintenance over time. And we would be remiss if we just kept doing new art installations and trying to take care of what we had. So I appreciate the consideration for being good stewards of the art we have and also being good stewards of the art we'd like to have in our community. So appreciate all your work on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I will make a motion to approve the AIPP Master Plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Andy. Jenny, would you call the roll?
Ms. Aludo? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Great, thanks, David. Please pass our appreciation along to all the good folks you work with.
Yes, I will. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Rapid Five project, and our staff report will be by Ms. Megan O'Callaghan. There she is.
Good evening, members of council. ULI, Columbus, Morpsey, and the Metro Parks are working together to develop the vision for a regional waterway system consisting of five rivers, including Big Darby Creek, the Sauter River, Olentangie River, Allan Creek, and Big Walnut Creek. The project's called Rapid Five, with rapid standing for rivers and parks imagination design. And it's a planning process to build a framework around our waterways to create a vision for one regional park network connecting recreation and central Ohio's communities. The visioning process for the project will kick off in late March or April, and it's anticipated to take only a couple of months wrapping up in the summer. The total project cost is estimated between $400,000 and $500,000. The main deliverables will include a booklet that contains each corridor's future visuals, storytelling, and messaging, as well as a public rollout event in the summer. Morpsey will serve as the project administrator, and the Neighborhood Design Center will serve as the prime consultant. They'll oversee five architectural firms that will each focus their efforts on one of the river corridors. Additional information about the project was included in your packet, and I also provided a link to a nice video that was in the memo. We view this project as having a nice tie-in to help inform our Dublin 2035 Framework Plan. The vision of the interconnectivity of these major waterways and trails within Franklin County will inform the updates to the community character and environment within the existing community plan, as well as addressing waterways, watersheds, greenways, trails, and connectivity topics. There's a number of other partners contributing to the project, including several other local governments, businesses, the Ohio State University in Franklin County. And staff recommends that the City of Dublin participate in the project and contribute $20,000 towards the project. Dublin will be identified as a project partner on all the literature, and will have a staff member liaison to the project for the duration. So with that, I would like to thank you and also would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Megan. Council questions?
You know, Megan, I've always been concerned about the Big Darby, and it's supposed to be our cleanest, most interesting river in the, you know, we have clams and wild animals, species there that don't exist anywhere else in Ohio that have been slowly drummed out by pollution and things. I don't know, does this include any discussion on, you know, I see an encroachment, not by us, of course, but by other municipalities on that particular waterway, and that really worries me. And also, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about farmers and the pollution running off and damaging that particular waterway. And, you know, there's been a battle over the riparian corridors, you know, how much, how many feet back should the farm fields be in proximity to the river? And, you know, of course, the farmers are, you know, and you can understand they don't want to give up very much land. And then there's this discussion on the kind of vegetation along the river. And I don't know, does this get involved in any of that? Or are we just sort of master-planning the courses of the river in their interest? And maybe their interest to the pioneers who even went up and down them? I'm just sort of curious if you got into any of that.
So this project is a visioning effort. So the goal is to demonstrate how the corridors can be transformed into green spaces and regional connections. So because it is a visioning effort and it does involve engagement, I am sure all of those topics will come up.
Okay.
And be considered.
John, I do know when the executive committee was talking about this, there was a significant consideration to water quality, and part of this is going to be water testing and also creating greenways adjacent to the blueways. So it's kind of a blueways and greenways study simultaneously. The transportation, obviously, being some on blueways, but then others on greenways in terms of path systems and things like that.
Yeah, it's such an important resource and such an important waterway, especially the Darby that, you know, you just hate to see. I'm glad they're doing this study because I'm glad somebody's putting the effort for it finally to, you know, maintain the magic of those waterways, not only for canoeers and sports enthusiasts, but for the fish and just everything else that, you know, is part of those waterways. So no, this is a great project. I'm totally, totally with it.
Hey, Megan, I thought it was interesting when I read the document, the vision said that the work will lay the foundation for development of one of the largest, if not the largest, interconnected green space in the country. I honestly had no appreciation for that scale until I read that, that this could, we could in fact end up with the largest greenway in the country. You're shaking your head. That...
Yeah. Yeah, we have a cool opportunity.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head there, Vice Mayor DeRosa, with this study is really about, and kind of to Councilmember Reiner's point, it's really about taking inventory of what we have relative to these waterways and associated protections and/or pathways and/or recreational things that various communities and entities have put together. But no one, I don't think we really stood back and looked at the comprehensiveness of all of that in one look. So I think really, there's some, this was, there was a test or like a beta test, that's probably not the right word. Ohio State did this for part of the Olentangie, I believe. And some of the mapping products that came out of this were phenomenal. So this is really as much a mapping exercise too, as it is to take inventory of all of these things and show that connectivity that you're referencing. So it's pretty exciting. I think it really ties in, as Megan mentioned, to our own 2035 visioning plan because it might help to tie in how our park system and greenways that we've been working on as a city for so long and those before us, you know, actually connect to the Sauter River as an example, and how that picks up connectivity elsewhere. So pretty exciting project from that overview perspective.
Yeah, you know, Dana, when I was reading through that, one of the, and something I hadn't thought about in this connectivity is that I thought it was very smart in there, they say the nearest pathway is a quarter of a mile from how many homes? Just thinking about proximity to where you work, where you go to school, where you go home. I think it's going to be hugely helpful for us, just on some of these metrics that maybe could enlighten how we think about that moving forward, or expand it, I guess I should say. But I thought it was a great project. So I'm very tickled we're doing this. I think it's great. Will Dubliners get to be part of the interviewee? Do we know how that's gonna work, the public engagement, Megan?
I do not know exactly how the engagement process is gonna work. Maybe the Design Center is gonna be responsible for putting that together and conducting it. Dana, do you have any insight on that from your discussions with William?
No, I really don't. Like the way it was explained to me, which may be different than what's in the literature, a lot of it is taking inventory first, I think, is, I think. That's how I took it, which I thought that's a pretty valuable tool to link all this stuff together and then figure out what we have. But I'm sure, you know, Morpsey's great at that engagement piece as well, and I'm sure they'll, as the manager of the project, figure out how to do that.
And then we can piggyback on. Great, thank you.
I think this was a great actual step after they did their connectivity study of, you know, bikeways and all of those other pathways. And I think what they covered when they were doing the bike so many of them were adjacent to greenways and blueways. And which probably led them into this space as well. So thanks for all your work on that, Megan and Dana. I know that was significant. Okay, well, I will make a motion to authorize spending of $20,000 to participate in the Rapid Five project. Is there a second?
It's like a whole bunch of us.
Yes. It was a collective voice of seconds.
I'd say John.
John, you're it.
No, no, no.
You got it.
Jenny, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have a DORA update, and our staff report will be from Allison Malloy. Welcome, Allison.
Thanks for having me tonight, Council. I can't believe it's been since July, since we last talked about, seems sort of like yesterday, but time flies. So Kyle, do I, can I share now? A small presentation, and I also want to share the maps.
Yes, you should have it now.
Okay. Yep. See, okay, are you seeing it now?
Yes, all clear.
Okay, thanks. So I just wanted to come back to you, give you kind of an update where staff has been with DORA. I think we don't necessarily have to go over what a DORA is. I think there's been enough conversation about that. But really, the goal is to enhance the outdoor dining and entertainment experiences. And we're really hoping that it brings some vibrancy downtown and helps those restaurants and retail establishments down there. There was a bill that did not pass last year, so we are still at two DORAs permitted in a city of $35,000 to $50,000. And Council can set the days and times and boundaries, basically, and it can be changed anytime with a new resolution. We put together this map that kind of showed you what other areas have DORAs in central Ohio. So you see, obviously, I think everybody's heard of Powell's, Marysville's, Delaware, Hilliard, Worthington, Gehanna, and Grove City, and they all do different hours. So for example, Hilliard-Powell and Delaware mostly just do weekends, and Gehanna and Grove City do all week, and then Worthington and Marysville only do special events. The details of that were in the memo. We did do a survey last year, and you can see the results of that survey that we had a lot of strong support for it last year, but there were some definitely people who had some concerns or questions about what a DORA was. We also did a Zen City report, which showed that there were six times more positive responses at that same time. It was about July and August of last year. So I think we came to you last year, and we talked about possibly doing a pilot program, so something starting off a little smaller. So a project that we could do now, and this would be the timeline, that we do have a public input meeting scheduled for March 3rd. And already, well, actually, while I was sitting here tonight, we got up to 149 people who have responded that they want to come to that. Then when we would come back to you, we'll be back on March 8th with sort of the wrap-up of that meeting. And then basically, what we would do is file an application with your body. And we have to advertise that for two weeks before we come back to Council to actually pass a resolution. So at that point, on April 26th, if the resolution was passed, then it gets sent to the state. And basically, all the state needs to do is issue the liquor permits. So that's the reason we say May for an implementation, because we don't know exactly how long the state would take to do that. So we would say probably early to mid-May. And then what we would hope to do is run it for a couple of months and then come back to you at the second meeting in August to sort of discuss how it's been working. Of course, anytime from May to August, we could stop it, we could, you know, change it. We could do anything you wanted to do in that timeframe. But we thought that would give us the summer months to sort of test it out and see how it works. So one of the things we kind of looked at is when we would do it. I know there were some discussions last time. I think when we came in July, we just had, I think we had all the time, you know, nights and weekends. So we kind of combined that just to do it for a smaller period of time, where we're just talking about Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 5 to 10. One of the things we heard originally, we had talked about Friday and Saturday, but we heard from a lot of our restaurants that for them, Thursday can be almost as big a night as some of the other nights on Friday and Saturday. So here you see what is different from this from last year. The main difference is that last July, when we came to you, we had one big DORA, and we had to use the bridges as the connectors because the area has to be in a contiguous area. So what we did in order to keep out the bridges and the parkland, we actually have two separate DORAs. So the green one here is obviously in Bridge Park, and the orange one here is in historic Dublin. And basically, you can see the boundaries in Bridge Park are kind of obvious. We can go to the detail, or sorry, we'll go to Historic Dublin first. It's a little hard to see on here, but I know the memo or the map was in your packet. But it goes up to the edge here where the new Seventh Son space is going to be up here and it goes down here and that's where Coast is. And over here you'll see that it encompasses like where the saddle lane is, J. Lou. We did include Derby Lot and the other parking lot behind the, the saddle lane, because we wanted to be able to use those spaces if we wanted to do any kind of entertainment, special entertainment there, especially in the Derby Lot, but we did not include the parking garage. On the east side, because we were doing full parcels, so you can see the one building that is just a parking garage, we did not include, but the buildings that include the parking garage and some other tenant space. So for example, if you look at the North Market site, that parking garage would officially be in the Dora district, but council can suspend and also make rules that say alcohol is not allowed in those parking garages. But for example, we wanted it to be allowed in the North Market area, but we wanted to not make it in that parking lot there. And so mainly what you see here too, is this is mostly only along Long Shore and then Bridge Park Avenue. Very specifically here, it's hard to tell, but we are not including the sidewalk along Riverside Drive. So it would only be on these east, the east side of these buildings here that are on Riverside Drive. And the reason that, we know that that sidewalk is actually kind of small, because there's planters and other things in the way, and we wanted to keep it to be a little safer, just to try it just doing on that mainly on Long Shore there. So basically, we do have the public meeting scheduled for March 3rd next week. We have been getting responses. We've had a bunch of questions. So what we're going to try to do is take those questions and put them into the presentation. We'll have staff there to share comments. You know, we'll have police and parks and everybody there to answer any kind of questions. And then we'll bring a summary back to you. You know, when we get to that point. And I can answer any questions now or take any comments that you have at this point.
Great, thanks, Allison. I do understand that we might have some public comment here this evening on this. So I do want to take a moment and ask Jenny in the clerk's office and Sue via the web, if we have received any public comment.
Nothing from the clerk's office.
Thank you. And Sue?
Yes, Mayor, we have received a couple of comments through the website. And I will read the first one is from Tracy Borquin, who lives at 5569 Farm Brook Lane in Dublin. And her comments are, while I understand businesses are struggling and would like to be supportive of them, I am very concerned about the effects a designated outdoor refreshment area would have on our community. I am concerned that a Dora would increase public intoxication and lead to more disruptive and dangerous behavior. This in turn would require more police intervention. I am also concerned it would increase alcohol consumption and drunk driving, thus endangering all of our families. I believe it would also put existing establishments that are outside of this area at a considerable disadvantage. These businesses that have existed in Old Dublin have already faced incredible challenges since the Bridge Street project began. First, they were burdened with city construction projects that made some of them nearly inaccessible while the parking lots and roads were built and redesigned in Historic Dublin. Then they had to deal with new competition from all of the new businesses in Bridge Street. Finally, just when they were catching their breath, COVID hit. Adding one more disadvantage, like having them compete with Dora across the river will likely be the fatal blow to some of these establishments. I doubt some of them will survive this final hit. Do you really want this? Additionally, I value the family oriented environment and reputation of our city and believe this would diminish that considerably. I think adding a Dora in Dublin is a mistake and will create far more problems that, than it solves. I believe it is very short sighted to think that it will help our community. I think in the long run, there will be far more problems created by developing it. Thank you for considering my opinion. And then the second message is a follow-up. It is also from Tracy Borquin, 5569 Farm Brook Lane. And she says, I submitted the feedback below just a short while ago for the upcoming meeting, but looking at the map again, I am not sure whether the Bridge Street area is included in the Dora or not. If it is included, then the points regarding them would not apply. I am still against based on other items I have discussed. Thanks for considering my thoughts. I am sorry for any confusion. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Sue, and thank you, Ms. Borquin, for your thoughts.
Mayor, if I may, I, I would just, you know, like to point out that we have received some comments through contact city council and contact city manager prior to, I don't want any of those folks that may have done that to not think we're not, you know, aware of those. And we have responded to those residents who came in through that portal. And just want council to know that we'll be sure to make you aware of those and any other comments we receive, and we will publish those comments to city council at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council questions, discussion?
I don't really have any tonight. I think we, we kind of see what happens on the third and hear from some of our residents and stakeholders in the area. There's one nuance that I wanted to run past Allison. If you purchase beverage in one establishment, you can leave that establishment and go to any, is it any retail location in that same Dora, but you can't go into another establishment that serves alcohol? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And you could also have a retail, that retail can choose whether they want to let it in or not. So we've discussed having a sticker or some kind of sign out front where they could say this is a Dora, it is in a Dora area. But yeah, you can't go from like, you know, DVTs down to coast or back and forth. You have to stay outside with anything you buy. You can't go back into the place you bought it at.
Okay. I've been to some of these and that confused me. I thought it, I thought it was a free for all and you could buy a drink and go anywhere in that Dora. And that's not really true. I guess I'd be curious to hear from other communities if they've found that to be a problem. So far in my discussions with folks, it is not a problem. It's just something you figure out. But I'm curious to hear other folks' input.
Yeah, and we've talked to, really extensively, we've talked to Powell and Hilliard. But those are some questions we can go back and ask them as well, because I don't remember that coming up in any of our discussions.
Allison, I would be really interested too about enforcement, particularly relative to the pedestrian bridge and you know, I, I think that's probably going to be the most popular place to take a walk with your drink and it is not in the Dora and it's landing you in a place that's in a different Dora. So you now have basically two obstacles to, to do the things that might be most intuitive to people that are wanting to grab a glass of wine and stroll around downtown. So I'm, I'm hopeful that when we have the public meeting, we talk about those things and then we hear from enforcement of what, what are we going to do? Because we know this problem is going to present itself and how are we going to handle it?
Yeah, I, I definitely think it's a topic that we know has to be part of that meeting. It's probably one of, of the questions we're getting. That's one of the top questions. They just want to know how it's going to be enforced and, and what, what the police are going to do when it's open. So we're going to make sure that they're there to answer those questions and probably do a little presentation before we actually get into comments and questions.
You know, Allison, I sat in on a statewide conversation about this about a year or so ago. And one of the things that's helpful is that there's a cup that you're allowed to use. And one of the communities mentioned that they put the rules on the back of the cup of how you have to follow the guidelines, so that there's no confusion about what you can and cannot do. So that's one thing. A question for you though, I'm looking at the boundaries and I know that this is a very kind of rough boundary, but this comment came to me through a constituent and I have to ask, on Franklin Street, the boundary is over a residential house just to the south of the parking lot. That's a house.
I think, yeah, that's, I see that now that you're saying that and we will adjust that. We kind of have looked at that. And, and the other thing we know we're going to have to mention at the meeting, especially for those people along Franklin Street, the same kind of thing that I was talking about with Riverside is going to be the same on Blacksmith and on Franklin and also on Millware butts up. It's only going to be on the public facing side, but we had to include the whole parcel. But now that you're saying that there is a residential house, I think that was just a mistake that we missed there. Because if you look at down below, like where Coast is, we skipped that residential home that was between that and the one right above it. So yeah, we'll go back and refine and make sure that we don't have the residential homes in.
Right. And then I also, and I think this is worth thinking about as you go forward on the boundary. I personally think that if you're going to do south, the South High Street District, as we've talked about the recommendations from the Historic District Task Force, they're trying to invigorate the entire street all the way down to that Chamber of Commerce. And if you leave out the old biddies and everything south of Everly Hill, when you think about incentivizing retail and maybe small little, you know, wine shop or something down there, if they don't think they're in the Dora, they're not going to locate there, right? So personally, I think it should be extended down to Penny Hill, where there is possible retail opportunities or, you know, a way to incentivize that area. So, and, and I don't think that there's, you still have quite a bit of, of commercial in that remaining two, remaining block. So I think you should think about that.
Yeah, I know. Oh.
Yeah, actually, we, we did give that some thought. And one of the, one of the things, we, we now have an art store further south of coastal lines, but there was really nothing to go in and out of south of there. I, I understand the whole idea of trying to promote future retail and so forth, but there's not even a vacancy down there at this point. And again, this was focused on beta test, if you will, at least through this season, but certainly open to that. The idea was to try to keep this on the Historic Dublin side, focused on North and South High Street with the extension to the west over towards La Shadow Lane and, and Jay Lou's and then picking up those lots, parking lots that Allison referred to. We're not trying to get into any of the alleys, not trying to touch any of the residential, trying to keep everything facing, as she said, on, on North and South High Street, except for that small section of 161 to the west. So we can certainly extend that down to the, the Chamber Building, if you'd like. I, I'll be honest with you, I wanted to hear that from you, not from us. So if that's where you want to go, you know, we'll be, we'll be happy to extend it and then try to, and get the feed, garner the feedback based on that, if that's, if that's where you want to go. So we, we're happy to do it that way.
You know, I, I think this is a question that I would really like to see raised with some of the commercial property owners down there, because it does open up opportunities for variety. I can understand maybe not doing it during this three month period, but I certainly can see where if I were looking for a place to lease farther down on South High Street and I knew that the Dora covered me, I would say to myself, that's going to, that's going to bring traffic down my way. And so, you know, I think it should be left as an, as an option or a discussion point.
Yeah, on a staff level, we've had a lot of discussion about the idea of people, you know, the idea is to stroll around and, and enjoy your drink, I guess, while you're able to see things. And so we've even had some discussion at staff level of do we sprinkle in over time, any entertainment, any pop-up art, anything like that, you know, that, that could be kind of sprinkled in the area to give people things to do and look at while they're strolling around. And and so, you know, extending that down that way may, may stretch the crowd out, but not the crowd, but the folks and give them something to do, which I think is important during this. Why else would you be strolling around if you didn't have things to do? So.
I know when Dalia, Dalia, that little shop was down there, they always complained that no one ever came that far. And now Jacob Stout is down there. And of course, he would like to have someone come to his retail establishment. So by extending it, I, I, I think it does some good for those people down on the south end.
Allison, I had a question. For folks that aren't able to attend, this, the session will be recorded so that people can watch and then they can submit their feedback? Or how was that going to work?
Yeah, we actually have a discussion about that today. We are going to show it just like we show a council meeting, so they could come and watch it later. And then we'll have a comment section. So we are going to make sure we keep track of all those comments and answer what we can that night. But if we can't answer it or it comes in later, then we'll be sure to include that in the information that we give to you.
Great. And, and you know, the other thought that I had is, I, I've listened to this is the Dora is about the ability to purchase alcohol and round. You know, there's other beverages, there's other types of things too. I, I begin to ask myself the question of what we're trying to say is refreshments and movement through an area. Are there, are, are other cities doing things other than making this a alcoholic beverage area? Or what's the thought on that?
Do you mean are they adding, like Dana was talking about, like entertainment? Or do you mean, do they have takeout food? I guess.
I don't know. Just sort of asking that, that the point is vibrancy, right? The, the point is community connectivity. We, we focus, of course, technically, we're talking about the ability to take an alcoholic beverage in there. So my question is if it's about vitality and interest, just are there other things that we, that we want to consider in this as we think about the, the excitement or vitalization, if you will, of the area, which is the intent of this, right? This is really what we're trying to do. And I just wondered what else you had learned or.
Yeah, and some things changed last year over COVID. So I use Hilliard as a perfect example. So in 2019, they only had the Dora available one night and they had entertainment and bands in their, down in their area. And then last year they extended the days, but they did not allow entertainment, because they didn't want to do gathering. So it's, it's, it kind of changed last year and a lot of these kind of came online or expanded last year. But I do think, for example, Worthington, when they were doing theirs, I think it's Worthington Wednesday nights where they would have, you know, shops would have special events going on. They'd have music, they'd have, you know, pizzas for a cheap price, you know, things like that. So I think that's something that we'll really try to work with the businesses around there to say, okay, it's, do you have Dora specials? What, you know, what do we want to do that kind of adds to that experience down there? And I do know Bridge Park has been talking, Carford Hoyden's been talking about programming those pocket parks during this time too, because they have those kind of built in. And we've been looking at what can we do in Derby Lot and such.
Allison, have, have these attracted food trucks and the like? Do we, would we need to come up with some master plans in terms of go where and things like that? I would imagine it would.
Yeah, and we haven't seen anybody report that as a whole, but I know that there was that and Jennifer could probably chime in on this if she's still there. But, you know, we had looked at that food truck ordinance a while ago, and it might be something that we need to look at if that kind of starts drawing different people. Because right now we don't really have any specific way to control, you know, where they come in. But it's something we can look at and we'll probably know within the first month whether that's going to be.
That's right. And planning did develop regulations, I think, for Bridge Street, and I just don't know where those amendments are. For the Bridge Street District.
Mayor, I would like to comment just as a follow-up on the gathering discussion. So you know, last year I think we were pretty concerned about the notion of gathering and does Dora drive gathering? And, you know, I think we, we cited, at least in our thoughts at, at staff level, that, that it, that it tended to do that. Then we learned a lot of lessons about outdoor dining and trying to support restaurants with more movement outside. So this kind of ties back to Vice Mayor DeRosa's thought too, is the ability to also help expand perhaps eating areas or benches or things like that. We, we've thought about and just trying to get more space. And I, I can see, I can see now, looking back, we're actually like Hilliard is, has done without trying to, to, to put entertainment and things in there too early that create gathering, but it does create the opportunity for better social, and, and for people to wait outside while they're, you know, waiting to go into the restaurant. So, you know, hopefully that's only a short term thing. And we're going to get through this and that's not going to be the issue. But I, I can't see where that could have a little bit of. But I, I can't see where that could have a little bit of value in this sort of process. Not that that's the reason to do it.
Great. Thanks Dana. Anything else from council?
No, I just, you know, I just want to agree with Dana about the idea of space development and developing some spaces. Cause we have subspaces that haven't yet been used and might be used in this Dora. I just want to remind the listeners that, you know, eighty five, about eighty-nine percent of the people thought this was a great idea. And you, the city council and the staff have looked at this and we found really, you know, in regards to any comments that we have had, no real police problems in Maryville, Marysville or any of the other cities that have done this, which is really great news. And then the other thought is for the historical area, there was some stress over there that Bridge Street was going to possibly drain away their business. And instead from talking to the restaurant people over on the historical area, they found out that the synergy has worked totally in their, in their favor. And now this Dublin Bridge Street corridor has become a dining destination for people in Worthington and Arlington and New Albany and a place to go to. So I think a lot of the unks that people feel or felt has been dissipated over time and has proven out that this thing really sort of worked in the favor of not only the community, but also the businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Thanks Allison. We'll look forward to the outcome of the public meeting and comments and information garnered there. Appreciate it. Okay. That brings us to staff comments.
Only have one item, one thing I'm going to lift up tonight, and that is that this is Sue Berness's last council meeting. I just wanted to take the opportunity because I think obviously you and many of our public see her at this meeting as our Director of Communication and Public Information. And she has been in that role for several years now and has been with the city for a total of 10 years. And her and her husband Jim have the opportunity to go to Florida. I don't know who would want to do that after the great winter we've had. But, you know, in her professional journey as well, she's going to become the Communications Director for the city of Dunedin, Florida. So we congratulate her on that. And I think this gives her the opportunity to also help her and Jim to transition to where they, where they wanted to be in retirement. So works out great for her. It's too bad for us. We're going to really miss her. I just wanted to publicly thank her for all the great work she's done, the great advice and counsel she's given me and, and, and council and our directors and our city at large, the marketing effort, the communication effort. You know, a lot of people don't realize, I don't think, the fact that a lot of city staff, particularly at the director level, are on call 24/7. That really includes too, even when you're on vacation and the like. And I, while we try not to do that, I can tell you Sue has always been there 24/7, no matter where she is, and has always been responsive and helpful and, and then done a great job. Her, her team of professionals are award-winning nationally and looked up to. That's a lot of tribute to her leadership. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her and thank her for all her great service to, to the city as an organization and to this community. So thank you Sue, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you Dana. I really appreciate that. And I just want to say, thank you for everything you have done for me, for my team, for our city and all the opportunities that, that I have had here. I have had as a resident in a city that I've loved and lived and then been able to give back as a public servant. And I want to thank city council for all of their leadership and all of their vision. I can look back and have such great memories and of the work that we did and the people that I did it with. So thank you. You know, this was a very difficult decision, bittersweet, but I, everything you said, this is kind of part of our plan. It just accelerated a little sooner and we are looking forward to really in many ways, a, a new life.
Well, we certainly do. Thank you for all you've done and wish you well. I was down there near your new home last week and the weather was glorious. So it'll, it's there waiting for you. And, and I know that I've reached out to you on a, on a night and weekend and you've answered and you've been on a boat or you've been in the middle of vacation or you've been doing all of those things and yet still took time to answer the call for us here in Dublin. So we certainly do appreciate your all-in-all-the-time mentality.
We'll miss you Sue. Come back and visit us.
Yeah.
Better yet, we'll visit you.
Yeah, I'm coming to see you Sue, not the other way around.
Well, I do plan to come back and visit and you are more than welcome to come visit me.
Especially in February, right?
Yes, yes. January, February, March. Yes.
Sue, I had the pleasure today of driving up and meeting your city manager and just how lucky she was to get you.
Are you, are you there now?
Yes, I am. I'm right below there, but I just drove up to see her and I said, I've got $50,000 and I've come to bribe you so we could have her back. And she left. So anyway, it was a lot of fun and she knows how lucky she is that you're coming down to help him out. So.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you Sue, for all you've done for us.
We're really going to miss you Sue, but thank you. We really appreciate everything.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you had? Okay. Thank you Dana. Thank you Sue. Godspeed to you for sure. Okay. Council committee reports, planning and zoning, Jane.
I don't have anything today.
Thank you. Admin Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of things. As you recall from last meeting, the mayor and I had had an opportunity to meet with our board and commission members. We've had an opportunity to pull together that feedback and have developed some action items that we're going to review again with the group. And we're going to bring them back as a written summary for council to consider and we'll do that at the next meeting. The admin committee met on February the 9th and we continued our conversation about resident engagement with council and continuing to promote and lift up our boards and commissions. We're in that cycle again. We think the deadline was today for some openings in our boards and commissions. So the first week in March, we'll be doing interviews for that, for those. And we'll be reaching out to get that, those times on your calendar. And then as far as boards and commissions, we were also from the last admin committee had a set of recommendations for that and we will write those up and the admin committee will bring those back for again, some council consideration at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. That brings us to finance, Christina.
Yes, thank you. Couple of notes as well. We did talk about quite a few things, actually with quite a packed agenda. One very quick one is the rent forgiveness for the subway. Per council's adoption, council said for as long as subway is not going to be in operation, we can forgive their rent through that time. They believe they may start operations again in April. So finance committee approved that extension through March. And we'll see how things go in April to see if they are back in the building again. We did also talk extensively about the stormwater maintenance recommendation from CSAC. We, so CSAC to make a recommendation, we've actually asked staff to go back and do, just answer a few more questions before we bring that back to council. So you should be expecting that in the next couple of months after our next finance committee meeting. We did a review of the 2020 budget and sort of where we ended up with things. Were about 103% in revenue of the revised budget and 80% in expenditures as compared to the revised budget. That's just like super high level nutshell. Some of the expenditures that were not expended were largely due to cancellation of events due to the pandemic and not actually any reduction in services at all. So those were just sort of two really high level points I wanted to note. We also had a really robust conversation about Fund 401, which is the land acquisition fund and Fund 402, which is the Parkland Acquisition Fund. We are likely to recommend a rollover for Fund 401. We had, we're having staff go back and answer some additional questions regarding both of those funds. And so those will come back to the next finance committee meeting and then will likely come before council after that point. That was about the bulk of it.
Great. Thanks so much for that report. Public services, Jane.
No, not now. We have an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Coda Kathy?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
I'll report on the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. I trust that some of you may have participated in the housing strategy meeting that was held last week and will be continued to help be held in the upcoming weeks to hear where we are in terms of housing in central Ohio. And also we will be meeting with all of the congresspeople who oversee the districts that Morpsy Visioning Area covers. So might have some more information as a result of those meetings by our next meeting. With that brings us to Logan Union, Champaign County. Andy?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Thirty-three corridor, Kathy Jane?
Yeah, we had a meeting on the 12th. We welcomed the new Union County Commissioner Dave Burke to the group. So that was very nice. We had a really very robust discussion about the developments up and down the corridor in terms of roadway improvements. And almost, I can say, almost every intersection between Dublin on the way to Marysville over the next three years is seeing some type of enhancement. So really keeping residents up to date and coordinating with our colleagues up and down the corridor is going to be pretty important because there are substantial projects, including the interchanges we know and others that are happening up and down that corridor. We spent some time talking about, as you mentioned, housing, Chris, with Morpsy, talking about both residential and commercial development up and down that corridor. The numbers, it's, it's been amazing that really haven't slowed down at all during the pandemic in terms of development. Jerome Township will be adding a second zoning inspector to keep up with demand as a one point on that. And Union County shared that they had did something like 16,000 inspections in 2020 and more than 492 single family housing starts. So there's a lot of robust development up and down, both on transportation improvements and continued commercial and residential development up and down there. So it just really reinforced the importance of this group that meets every other month to coordinate and talk about all the development going up and down that corridor. So an important exchange and we'll continue to, to keep you updated on that. As we noted, Jane is rolling off that and Andy is rolling onto that. And so he'll join us for that next meeting. But an enormous amount, very positive when we, we think about the growth up and down that corridor. We're going to see a lot of activity here over the next three years. So thanks, Chris.
I appreciate that. Arts Council, John, I know we heard a lot from David tonight. Didn't know if you had other comments?
Well, if you've been wondering what your neighbors have been doing, you might want to visit the exhibit Artifacts Created Home. Some crazy fun and creative works by your neighbors. They're going to run, that's going to run from March 9th to April 16th. And that can be virtually viewed or you can make an appointment to stop in. And your last chance to see some really creative works by our students, artists, you're going to be shocked at their imagination and their skill. And that will be closing here February 26th. So try to get out and enjoy yourself and it's an outing. And the Arts Council will make an appointment if you want to stop in and view some of these arts. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, John. Board of Education, Greg?
Thanks, Chris. I talked with Dr. this afternoon. They are planning on full, returning to full in-person instruction on March 15th. The majority of their employees have received the first round of vaccine and they will, they will receive the second round this week before that date. Their internal rates are extremely low. They are similar to the rates as they were back in September of last year. And the per hundred thousand rates as they are here in Dublin, which is almost the same as the school district are continuing to reduce. He's very proud of the depth of the kids and the staff and doing, following all the mitigation strategies and that it appears to be working. So we're continuing to work hard at that. They are starting to work on designing summer programming for students because of the value for not only educational, but emotional and health and wellbeing over the summer months. They're, they're consulting with other school districts and finding out the best way to do that. And the newest middle school, Eversole Run, has chosen its mascot. They will be the Golden Eagles. The building is on schedule and on budget and will be open and being used in August of this year. And finally, they are in the process of hiring a director of diversity. They had 150 people apply. The beginning interviews in mid-March, they're going to hopefully have a candidate selected in April and they will start on the job in June. That is the report from the school district.
Well, thanks Greg. Appreciate that. I was taking my son and a friend of his to soccer tonight. I said, what do you guys feel about returning all into school? And, and my son says, you know what? I can't wait. I never thought I would say that, but I can't wait. So that is out of the mouths of babes and he cannot wait to go back to school all in every day. His mother, his brother shares the same exhilaration. That's all I'll say about that. Okay. Washington Township, Jane?
Yeah, I have to unmute there. The news is, is that Washington Township has been approved to be a COVID-19 vaccine program provider. And so I thought the public would like to hear that. I know council has, has known that through an email. But of course it's very contingent on vaccine supplies. But if and when they become more readily available, they'll be able to, Washington Township will be able to work with the plan that Dana and staff have put together to create a vaccination site for, for vaccination administration here in the city. So that's really great news. And of course, Washington Township is excellent in that. So I'm, I'm very proud of Washington Township and their efforts and the chief's efforts. Good news.
That's a heck of a plan Dana came up with, that he has vaccinated everyone in the city in seven days.
I know it. Yeah, it's great. He can do it. Bainby can do it. The general can do it.
I'll stick with you for Bridges, Jane.
Yes, Bridges is utilizing, Bridges and the Welcome Warehouse, excuse me, and the Dublin Community Pantry, Food Pantry are really utilizing the dollars that the city gave through the CARES money for them. And, and there have been numerous requests from people here in the, in the city for the use of that money. So it's going to good use. And I do hope that as a second round of CARES money comes through to cities, that we have the opportunity to provide even more help to those social service agencies. Because this is not just for the poorest of our people. This is for our average citizen who is really struggling because loss of job or health-related injuries or seniors. There's just so much need out there. So thank you for, they all say thank you for the help that we've given and I hope we can continue to do that.
Appreciate that Jane. And Veterans Committee, John?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody who turned out for the funeral of a fellow veteran, Pat Monahan of Shawnee Hills, Vietnam veteran, just well beloved by everyone, a Vietnam vet and just a really overall great guy and a member of St. Patrick's Parish. So big loss for the community. But thank you for everybody who gave their condolences to his wife and family and came out to honor Pat. Thank you very much.
Okay. Round screen. I will start with Jane.
Okay. Couple of things. The, the new, I sit on the steering committee, asked us Greg and, and Chris for the new city hall. So I don't know when the tour is going to be planned, but I think it's time. I think it's time for everybody on council to take a just look at it. It's going to be quite an exciting place. So I'm hoping we make plans for that. And the other thing I wanted to mention to anybody who's still looking, I have heard that tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, the Franklin County Public Health website is going to have a more than normal, more than usually available opportunities for signing up for vaccinations. So for those who are struggling to find a vaccine appointment, or go directly to the website, and I'll have to spell this, B-I-T dot L-Y slash V-A-X-two-normal. two normal. That will take you straight to the appointment system. So the Franklin County Public Health website is saying that they have available appointments, so I hope that people will be able to get one. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate that. Maybe we can get those links on our website.
Okay, great.
That would be really helpful. Try to connect with Sue after the meeting. John?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Greg?
Just to echo my fellow council members, good wishes to who's going to be heading to Florida, who evidently John is down the doing reticence and Sue. So I only hope he blazes the right trail for you down there. We wish you all the best. Thank you for your service. And, you know, it's really, really exciting time for you. So congratulations and best wishes. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig.
And I'm sure there was no bribery money ever involved at any point. This might have been alluded to earlier. Mr. Keeler?
I've got nothing tonight.
Okay, Christina?
So yeah, Jane, Andy and I actually beat you to the punch. We got our little tour of council chambers the other day. And it it really is, you guys, thank you on the steering committee. You guys have done a bang up jot. But it's, it blew me away. I'll be really honest. And when I got to see the space where Andy's table is going to go, I was like, this is perfect. So it's amazing. I think it's going to be an just an outstanding civic space for our residents to be able to come and be part of our meetings, be part of public engagement in a whole bunch of different ways that it's just not possible to do in in the old council chambers. So you guys should be patting yourselves on the back. Really phenomenal. And yes, Sue, I will miss you so much. When I came on council, it was sort of a little before a lot of onboarding was done and I really relied on you and Anne and everybody else to kind of show me the ropes and make me not look as stupid as I probably was and definitely felt. So I wish you all the very best of luck and you never should invite me to come over to your house unless you mean it. Because remember, I got five kids.
All are welcome.
All right. Thank you, Christina. Kathy?
Yeah, thank you. Sue, while you're still up there, the best of luck to you. I got to know Sue during my corporate tenure. So I want to say on behalf of of all the the corporate citizens, they're going to miss you too, because you'd go out of your way to sign a spotlight on what the corporations were doing and how we were working together in partnership with the city. And that has had such an impression on me and I know on many others. So on their behalf, I will say thank you. And we'll all miss you. And my kids are gone, so it's just Mike and I. So we'll be down to see you. Thanks very much.
Fantastic. Thank you Kathy. Thank you.
I also wanted to say thanks to the chamber, the those that were able to attend the Economic Forecast Breakfast that they do every year. It was really well done. And there was also an update on vaccines from Ohio Health, which is really excellent. So I'm hoping that video is made available for folks to see because it really was a terrific update on what what we're learning about the vaccines and and some of the variants and things like that. It was incredibly well done. So thank you on their behalf. And Jane, I also got to see a tour. So we snuck it in before you even gave us permission here and it really is fantastic. So thank you to the committee. It really will be a fun day when all of us as a community get together to gather in that space. So looking forward to that.
Well, we never did have a chair for our committee, but if we would have had a chair for our committee, I think Greg would nod his head in agreement that it would have been Jane. She has certainly done the lion's share of that work and has done it in noble fashion. So we appreciate all of that. And it has, for all of us, I think, been a labor of love to see just where this community has been and where it's going. So that will be a neat thing. So Sue, best of luck to you. Happy trails. Dublin will always be home. Don't forget that. And you certainly will. You have all of our best wishes and we look forward to the exciting things that you have there. And with that, if there is nothing further for the good of the order, we will stand adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.